Here.
Arthur?
Yeah.
Amber, here.
If we could please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel if I get approval for tonight's special meeting agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Don, I mean Larry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Amber.
Yes.
I'm going to move past comments from citizens and move down to item six, new business. Counsel, this is approval for an irrevocable letter of credit to Carroll Electric Cooperation for Commercial Development Installation Agreement Booster Pump Station for the Water Transmission Line. Basically what this is, is we had to put up a letter of credit for the electrical company to install the electric lines that are being put in for the pump station on the new water line. The Rosetta, the company that is putting those in is actually paying, am I saying this right, Mr. Clark? They're actually paying the twenty some thousand on it. But we had to put up a letter of credit for this.
Well, there's two different amounts. Rosetta is paying the upfront cost. This is the letter of credit to guarantee the usage in kilowatt hours.
Right.
For three years.
It can be three or five, but three years worth. So, anyway, we had to call a special meeting to approve this, to go ahead and sign this with our bank, which is Grand Savings, I believe is who has put this together for us. So.
Is this letter of credit just so we pay our bill?
I think it's to guarantee that we use so many, so many wattages, is how you say it? Kilowatt hours on this line, which we will, obviously, but for them putting in. How many feet was it? Twelve hundred, thirteen hundred feet? Mile and a half, excuse me, of line for this one application.
So we're guaranteeing them that we're using X amount or not using any more than a certain amount?
That we're using X amount.
Okay. Well, I don't know that there's anything we can do, but go with it. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Amber?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
And with counsel approval, all the spins from alderman's comments, mayor's comments, attorney comments, and adjourn this meeting and turn it over to Mr. McCartney for your cal meeting. So, motion to adjourn.
I have one thing that I would like to say. We normally, as a rule, on these special meetings, do not get paid for them if they occur on the same night. So I make a motion that we not get paid for this special meeting.
Okay, so you put that in the motion. I need a second.
Second it.
Roll call.
Tommy?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Now then, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McCartney.
We call our committee the whole meeting for January the 21st, 2020. Roll call, please.
Gene?
Yes.
Don? Tommy?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll dispense with the pledge of allegiance. Approval of the agenda?
I'd like to add an item to the agenda. Item G in the new business, streets?
G, streets.
Streets?
Okay, we have 10G added. Approval of the agenda?
Make motion approve.
First, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you just want to look at the previous month's minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Amber?
Abstain.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you. And next we'll go into our monthly financials.
Okay. For the month of December 2019, for the city general, the revenue was 294,810.3 cents. Expenses were 452,124.70 with a negative 157.314.67. And that was mainly the solar panels that were installed. That was a big chunk. For the water and sewer, revenue was 526,208.08. Expenses was 317,824.49. Less 163,130.62 for the loans. Gave it a net change of a positive 45,252.97. For the street, revenue 19,533.54. Expenses were 36,847.97 with a negative 17.314.43.
And counsel, if you don't mind, if you look at the second column, it says year-to-date. When you scroll down through there on the year-to-date and net income, where your recorder treasurer showed you that we're negative 157.314.67 for December. If you look over to the very next column, under the year-to-date, that 1,036,152.64 is what your city did overall for the year. So you were positive $1 million for the year. And in your water and sewer department, you're positive 1.2 million for the year. And in your street department, you're positive 2,0291. I know we always have questions when you guys are deliberating over passing something or road projects or whatever on how the city is doing. But this is kind of an easy way for you can tell where you're at at any time during the year.
Any questions on financials? Thank you, Your Honor. Comment from citizens. We have any comments? Give your name, address, and limit to three minutes. Gone once, gone twice, gone. Thank you. And we will go to our departmental reports, and we will start with our police department.
We got month of December report, and then that'll be followed by our 2019 year report. For the month of December, we had 668 calls for service. We had 17 accident reports filed. We served 50 warrants, leaving us with outstanding 488 warrants. And the total outstanding amount is 499,797.50. Our citations, total citations issued was 248. Of the 248, 37 were for speeding. The other traffic violations came out to 193, and criminal citations were 18. Warning totals were 302, with 132 of those for warnings. And other traffic warnings were at 170. Attached to that is a printout of every ticket warning and warrant and numbers for the month of December, so you can see what the other traffic violations are being wrote for. Any questions on that before I jump into the other one?
I do have a question. You know, every month, whenever we got the previous reports, you know, I felt like there was a little bit of concern with the number of citations or calls of service or whatever, not necessarily by the council, but, you know, just in general, asking, what does it all mean? I hope that you like this new presentation. I asked Mr. Jensen to give you guys a little bit more of a breakdown of what it all means. So in other words, just by saying we had 668 calls of service and X amount of traffic citations sometimes gives you the impression or could give you the impression that we're writing tons of speeding tickets in Tawny Town. So what I did was ask Mr. Jensen to give you more of a breakdown of what the actual citations were, what the tickets are all about, so that way you can see for yourself as far as whether you think we're writing too many or not enough for your city.
I know it's a pain, but I liked the description.
Moving on to the 2019 department report for the year. So we added a couple officers in 2019, so kind of a breakdown of what that's done for us. From 2018, we had a total of five officers that were assigned to patrol. Those officers spent roughly 10,400 hours patrolling within the city through the year of 2018. In 2019, with the addition of officers that we hired, one of those working patrol is going to be a sergeant working a split shift, giving us a total of seven officers that are assigned to patrol regularly. Those seven officers are going to patrol roughly 14,560 hours through the year of 2019, which is an increase of 4,160 hours that you have patrolling in your city with the addition of officers. And none of those numbers will include any overtime that they've given. Moving on to the next page, breakdown of our court cases that we had through 2019 with Elm Springs District Court. These numbers are going to be what cases were actually filed to and went through court. So if somebody once paid their ticket, then that's not showing on this number. It didn't get filed into court. But our total caseload that actually went through court was 2,576 cases. 547 of those were criminal cases. 29 were DWI. 54 were juvenile-related cases. 670 were city ordinance violations. And we had 1,276 traffic violations. Comparison there with Elm Springs cases. Our court is the third busiest court in Washington County. Only Springdale and Fayetteville are busier. So we're pushing a lot, a lot of cases through there between two cities. Next page covers our warrants. At the end of 2019, we had 488 active warrants for failed up here and failed to pay fines and cost for the year. That left us with an outstanding fine balance of 499,797.50. In the year of 2019, we served 457 warrants. Citations and warnings. The total citations that we issued in 2019 were 2,749. Of those, 1,590 were for traffic violations. 265 were for criminal violations. 894 were for city ordinance violations for improper driving. Total warnings, it's kind of hard to break down a warnings total, but total of those were 3,215. Accidents, we filed 201 accident reports. It's roughly a 20% increase from 2018. We were at 167 total in 2018. We did not have any fatal accidents in 2019, whereas we did have three in 18. So we're doing better there. Next page, calls for service and incident reports. The total calls for service for the year of 2019 were 6,938. It's a 19% increase from 2018. That's roughly 991 calls per officer that they're handling. We, in total, reports from calls for service that required a further investigation or an incident report filed was 336. And kind of a breakdown of the 336, this is just a few of the kind of your notable categories, I guess you'd say. We had 25 reports filed for crimes against persons. 15 of those were assault reports. 10 of those were battery reports. We had 92 property crimes reported. 17 of those are for breaking and entering. We had six for burglary reports. One of those was commercial, and five were residential. We took 69 theft reports. 69 of those 69 reports were, and this should be its own slide for Detective Sweeney, because this is his hard work showing, since we started that position, which was created in 2019, of the 69 theft reports filed, he has closed 40 of those reports resulting in arrest. 29 of the 29 remaining reports, 14 have suspects identified and warrants issued or pending. So he's doing a remarkable job. We had 53 DWI reports and 59 narcotics-related reports. The back few pages on this is going to be like the first printout for December, but this is going to be for the entire year of 2019. So total, every citation, warning, and warrant service that we've done through our system.
Also, to help the council out, just to jog your memory just a little bit, we pressed R dot quite a bit over the past two years about assisting us with Highway 412. Thanks to Mr. Taldo, the commissioner for highways in Arkansas. We actually got a speed reduction on Highway 412 by five mile an hour, which may not sound like much, but kinematics of trauma would suggest that what they've done has helped as far as the deaths and fatalities on our roads, especially on Highway 412. You know, we saw 11 fatality accidents from 2015 to 2018. And knocking on wood here, not saying that everything that has been done has helped that area of town, but we think by reducing the speed, also you notice that there's ripple strips that were installed out there as well for people that are texting when they cross the line. They feel it and maybe make them look up a little bit. Also, the addition of the sign that Cory and his guys, if you haven't noticed, move around periodically, we feel like has helped quite a bit in the city. But to kind of give you guys what the impact of what these guys have been doing for your town. When I first became mayor in 2015, we did a warrant study out here on Highway 412 for Clint's Road. And I want to think at that time, and help me out, Mr. Clark, if I'm wrong, but I want to think we were somewhere around 26,000 people a day traversing Highway 412. We did warrant studies last year, which we got approved for the stoplight on Clint's Road, and we're about 38,000 people a day. So we've increased from 2015 to present, over 10,000 people a day traveling Highway 412. So, you know, to condemn our police for writing some warnings or writing a few tickets to get people to slow down, I don't think the answer is to tell them to stop what they're doing, especially when you have state troopers that come in my office telling me how they just cited three people running over 100 mile an hour on the west end of our town. I firmly believe that, you know, stopping a few people every now and then to get them to slow down to maybe save somebody from losing their life is very important to me. And we've been pretty focused on trying to do as much as we possibly can to get people to see our road signs, to get people to slow down just a little bit. And we're not trying to punish our citizens at all. I don't know if you guys even noticed, but there's a section in his report that says ordinance violations. Basically what that means is when our officers write an ordinance violation, it does not go against your record to affect your insurance. And our guys, I feel like, are very, very cognizant of the fact, especially with folks that have commercial driver's licenses, what the effect of writing them a ticket is. So, you know, I commend our guys for the efforts that they do. You know, when they're, you've seen in the report, our guys are handling 900, almost 1,000 calls per man is what they're handling. So if you work 365 days a year, how many does that add up? And they don't work 365 days a year, so these guys are handling six, seven calls apiece a day. And I don't know how many of you guys have sit down in front of the computer to write reports about incidents, but every report that they have to do takes them about an hour to hour and a half to write, just to plug all the information in. So, Mr. Jensen, thank you, and thank you to your officers. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for our chief? Okay, going on to our next is our fire department and our operations chief, Todd Witzman.
In the month of December, we responded to 38 calls for service, 22 in the city, 16 in the rural area. In the city, we ran 10 EMS, five fire, four MVAs, one alarm call, and two service calls. In the rural area, we had five EMS, six fire calls, three alarms, and two service calls. Year-to-date, we ran 277 calls in the city and 126 in the rural area for a total of 403 calls. That works out to about 69% of the calls were within the city limits. And there's also in your report a breakdown of the calls year-to-date.
Anyone has any questions? No questions, then we will proceed on to our public works department. Mr. James Clark.
The planning board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, January 28, 6:00 PM. Excuse me, the hearing is in regard to Chapter 153, landfill exclusive zoning. The board meeting immediately following the public hearing will address the landfill zoning as well as a request for a waiver for design requirements for the reserve multifamily development. The mayor and I met with APAC and Garver last week regarding Fletcher Road project. It sounds like they're willing to make changes to the bid package to allow us a reduction in cost of around 150,000. However, APAC wanted some time to review the full package before confirming. There is a chance that we may have to reject all bids and rebid the project. Since I wrote this, I actually received an email this afternoon. Garver or APAC has agreed to reduce the cost of the project. It's about 152,000 dollars. We also spoke with them about adding the middle part of Fletcher Avenue, and it looks like that's going to be an additional cost of about 250,000. So from our original bid of 1,089,000, we're only going to have to add about an extra 100,000 to that to get the whole project completed. I also met with the president of the Westbrook POA last week. Their subdivision is continually having trouble with cars speeding through their neighborhood. They approached the city last year and maybe even the year prior requesting speed bumps be installed to help slow the traffic. This is something that we've tried to avoid, and we have been approached by other subdivisions, but don't really want to get speed bumps started. Currently, there are only two speed limit signs in the entire subdivision. So we told the president that we're going to add more speed limit signs, some children playing signs, and know-through traffic signs, as well as making the Geiki Ranali and Geiki Penzo intersection four-way stops to help slow down the traffic. Police department has also set up the speed limit trailer in the subdivision to help make the public aware of the limit. The water transmission line project is still dragging along. Carroll Electric has finally started three-phase power extension to the booster pump station. As of January 15th, they had installed five poles and have 28 poles left to go. That will get power to the intersection of Old Highway 68 and Robinson Road. Once that's complete, there is about 600 feet of underground line to be installed to get to the booster pump site. There's been another delay with the transmission line itself. When the contractor began filling the line from the booster pump to the tank, I'll put this up on the screen so you can see. I don't know if you can see that very well, but a leak was discovered on Patriot Metals property at Mustine Road. Once the line was excavated, it was clear that the earth-moving equipment working on Patriot Metals project had damaged the pipe. Ductile iron pipe is the toughest material there is for water lines, which is why we chose it for the transmission line. However, it's no match for a D8 Dozer's ripper. That section of pipe has been removed already. It has been hydrocleaned and inspected with a camera and put back together. And the developer is responsible for the damage to that pipe. I don't know how much it was, but it was, I would say it's pretty costly. Down at the bottom, we always talk about growth, and I wanted to give you a little bit of an idea about water meters and sewer connections. As you can see on the left-hand side, in 2015, the city had 982 water meters and 183 sewer connections. At the end of 2019, we had 1,714 water meters and 839 residences or businesses connected to sewer. The number that the health department uses when they do our sanitary survey, they take our meters times 2.3, and that gives them a rough population. If you do that with 1714, that puts us at 3942, almost 4,000 people, for an estimate. That's all I got.
Any questions?
On that line there, James? You said with a ripper. Now how deep, how deep is that line?
Well, now it's about five foot deep. When they got into it, they've been moving dirt all over that property out there, and
Been taking the dirt off the top of it.
Some places they have, and that was one of the places. But they have filled back in over it. Honestly, the Dozer had no business being where the water line was.
Yeah, but didn't they know it was there?
Yes, sir, they did.
They didn't?
They knew it was there.
Somebody did, somebody didn't.
Yeah. And I'm sure he didn't even feel it. He was ripping some rock, and, you know, he would have ripped right through that just as easily.
Not with a D8 Dozer, he didn't feel it.
And those are marked very well. James and I went and surveyed all of this a week, week and a half ago. And if you travel 412, it's very obvious by all the blue markers that there's water lines there. It's very obvious. Any other questions? Next, we'll go on to our planning department. We have any comments on planning?
You can lie to us?
Going off memory, I'm Kevin Bortz. I'm one of the members of the planning board. Last meeting we did, I believe, had three items that we had looked at. One of them was the Green family. It was a zone change on their land out on the end of Artemani. It was a 15-acre tract that was agriculture, and we unanimously approved to do a residential three on that one. The other one, I think, was the Biaza, Piazza large-scale development right down here on 112 that we unanimously approved with some conditions added to that. And the last one, I believe, was a final plat on the Marisone Acres PUD out here that I think there were 70 houses that we have. We final platted and approved that unanimously as well. I know we're talking and looking at some temporary signage throughout Tawny Town, so we're taking a look at that to see what we can do to try to clean up a little bit of that piece of it. But I think that is all that we actually discussed on the last planning board meeting, going by memory, which is sketchy. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And last is our Tontie Town Museum Board and Beverly Cordiana.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we had three items on our report this month. First of all, the HVAC was replaced. Um, installation was complete the first week of January. And, um, they added two additional runs, as we talked about before. One, so we'd have event in the storage room and the other in the entryway. So, hopefully that's gonna help keep things more, uh, distributed. Um, so we will continue to monitor the heat and the, and humidity. And the second thing is we are needing more stor- storage. And in the city hall attic, we have, um, Pat Penalto helped me up there to kinda mark off some space so we can move some things that are in this current storage room over at the city hall, I mean, over at the museum up to give some more working space, non-critical items. These are like, there's a table, there's just miscellaneous stuff. And then lastly, this was a good item, uh, the Preserve Arkansas Award Ceremony was Friday night in Little Rock. And, um, I think we had mentioned before that we received the award for excellence in heritage preservation. Um, the city of Tontie Town, Tontie Town Historic Museum and Scott Davis were all named as the, as the owners of that award. And so I have it with me. It's right here. And it, it actually was a pretty cool evening. It was at the Governor's Mansion, which was kinda fancy and fun. Um, there were a lot of people there. Um, and, uh, the, it's actually very impressive on the folks that are there and the preservation around our state that happens with these folks behind it. So, I was, um, kind of in awe of it all. I did go and look online at the Governor's Mansion website, um, to kind of, I was wanting to get familiar with it. I'd never been there before. And there's a very nice virtual tour of the Governor's Mansion. That's kinda fun if y'all wanna take some time, some time and just look at it, 'cause it, it goes through the various rooms there as well as this new dining area that they have built in the, I forget, in the last couple of years, so. Um, but it's fancy. It was very fun. Unfortunately, the mayor wasn't unable to go, so I went in his place. So, it all, he had a happy birthday instead.
But I seen pictures. You were all dressed up and you looked very beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, we had to get all fancied up. But yes, it was very nice and Scott, I think, was very appreciative. And actually Bobby Brayley, who is the person who, uh, at Kane Hill that Scott Davis has worked with a lot on historic things, he received an award also for the book that he published last year on Kane Hill. So, they had a, it was lots of celebration. And Charlene Feit, Fight, Representative Charlene Fight, who, um, actually sent an Amici membership in not too long ago. I had never met her, actually, but saw her, she was at Bobby Brayley's table. So, I got to go over and thank her personally for joining our museum friends group, Amici. And she was so nice and her husband, her husband carries this little card that he's part of Howl, which is husbands of women representatives. And it's a real cute, he was kinda fun, anyway. So, it was a good time. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Beverly. And we have no old business at this point, so we'll go directly into our new business. And the first one is the discussion of the amended twenty-nineteen budget.
Counsel, before you, uh, had, uh, Pat put in your packet this evening is the amended budget for two thousand nineteen. Uh, we basically call this the cleanup budget. Um, as items are in a budget, there, it's a living, breathing animal. Uh, so in an effort, uh, what we try to do is try to work from this budget throughout the year. But as things come up and occur, obviously it changes where monies get spent. So, uh, we've done this for the past three or four years now where we do a cleanup budget at the very end. Um, and what Pat tries to do here in January is get the last remaining bills and then assign them to all the appropriate categories and then zero everything out. So, uh, we put it in your budget to move it forward to the next city council for passage.
Any questions?
We do ask that you move it forward to the council meeting.
I suggest you put it to the city council meeting.
Thank you.
Have a second?
I will second that.
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you. Next line items, discussion of the sale of a nineteen-ninety Pierce-dash fire truck and removal from the city's fixed assets. Colvin?
Counsel, we've, uh, discussed this truck on several different occasions. Um, you know, we've had it in and out of the shop and had different items fixed and or repaired on it. Um, for whatever their reason may be, it just seems like we, we keep, uh, putting money into this hole, um, to, to keep adding to the cost of service for this truck. Uh, I've discussed it with Todd, uh, on several occasions. Um, it's our thoughts at this time that we go ahead and, and cut the truck loose. It actually was housed, uh, at T.A.F.D.'s Fire Department for several months. Um, while it was operable there, uh, it wasn't trustworthy enough for them to use it, so they moved it back down to the city shop. Um, and since then, uh, our water department's asked me when we can get the truck out of there so they can utilize the shop. So, uh, it's taken up quite a bit of space. Uh, we have since looked at, uh, some other options, uh, with possibly looking at the purchase of what's called a, a quick attack truck, which I firmly believe that's the direction that we do need to go in, uh, which is a smaller version of a fire truck and basically on a five-fifty chassis is what we'd like to go with. And if we can find some grant funding for it, uh, that's what I would like to pursue. But due to the cost, uh, of this truck, uh, we do have to put it before the council, uh, to allow for you guys to allow us to offer it for sale.
I'll make a motion to offer it for sale.
Second it.
Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
To move to the city council meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any, is there anybody right now interested in it?
I don't know. I mean, we'll just have to get it up on some of the websites that they sell these on. And, uh, Todd's got a list of, uh, different equipment folks that, um, that he's gonna reach out to, uh, that deal on these type of trucks. Uh, I think with the age of the truck, we're probably gonna have to end up selling to probably somebody overseas is what we think will happen with the truck.
Do we have equipment going for that or is it just the bare truck?
We're gonna strip the truck and take what we need off of it.
They ain't gonna get much for it, then.
Probably not.
Any other questions on that? Our next line items, discussion of the Piazza property, Fletcher Road.
Um, counsel, uh, James and I, uh, met with Mr. Piazza, um, on the Fletcher Road Extension Project. Um, this has been a couple of weeks ago now. Um, and basically the discussion was that the need for the city to make the connection straight through on Fletcher Road. Um, you know, I wasn't, I didn't, didn't think it was a bad meeting at all that we had with Mr. Piazza at all. Uh, you know, we discussed the needs of the city. Uh, and obviously with the new school coming in about making the connection from Barrington Road over to Highway one-twelve is a necessity for the city. And, and just judging by how much traffic that we continually have on Highway four-twelve, um, we really have to look to the future about making some connector roads that parallel Highway four-twelve. Um, Mr. Piazza was very understanding in our conversation. Um, and essentially, uh, what I told him was, is that, uh, there's really three offers, if you will, possibly four, on the table, um, which I explained to him that the worst of the option is for condemnation of the property, which is basically the city coming in and, and taking the section of property that we need to continue on with our connection, which I told him I, I really did not want to do unless forced to do that. Um, the other option was to allow the city to come in and make a purchase of the section of property that we need. Uh, and also buying the northern section of it as well. Um, he relayed to me that he did already have a purchaser for the north part of the property, which I told him I knew who that was and would very much appreciate if they did buy that from him. Um, also, the other option was, is I do have a buyer that would be interested in buying all of the Piazza property through there if need be, if that's part of the negotiation, thereby allowing us to purchase that section of the property from that individual. Um, at the time of our discussion, uh, he did request to ask, um, for a little bit of time to address it with his family and also to talk to his attorney, uh, about this proposition. Um, he did, uh, give James Clark a call yesterday, I believe. Um, he's gonna be in our offices in the morning, uh, to discuss it. I would've preferred that he would've gotten back to us sooner, but unfortunately, that's how things are, are working out with this piece. But, um, reason why I'm putting it on the cowl tonight to go forward with is, um, in case we don't come to an agreement, um, on this section of property, I want to, uh, go ahead and, uh, move forward with condemnation of the property. So, I'm asking the council to put this forward to the city council meeting at the next council meeting, uh, to vote on condemnation of the property. Um, hopefully after our discussions, uh, tomorrow with Mr. Piazza, we won't have to go to that extent. Um, but the law kinda requires me to put it to the cowl to get it forward to the council and you guys to approve it or disapprove of it.
What do you need to do to do that?
I need you to move this forward to the city council meeting.
Bad as I hate to do it, I'll make a motion to forward it to the city council meeting.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Tommy?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Larry?
Uh, yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Now, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it the price of the property is what's holding it up or?
No, I, I don't believe so. I mean, we, we really haven't got into a whole lot of discussion, uh, on price. Uh, I know that we had an initial, um, appraisal done, um, that Mr. Piazza did ask about in our meeting, wanted to appraise for, because if you recall, uh, we did purchase a section from them, or actually two sections from them already. Um, and he did ask what the appraisal amount for the section that we need, uh, was at the time. So, we really haven't got into any kinda conversations or real conversations about money, so to speak. So, I don't know necessarily if it, if it's a money thing or, or not a money thing right now as much as it is giving up your land for future purposes. You know, I know that, uh, part of our discussion with Mr. Piazza was, uh, the possibility of zoning the property commercial in that area, which I told him that, uh, we would probably would love to address with them because the city right now needs, I feel like, more areas that are zone commercial because that will increase what the city's funds are revenue if we have more commercial areas. So, uh, depending on how our talks go tomorrow, I'll be able to, uh, tell you more about it in the future.
But if you zone, if you build, uh, build that road plum through there, it's gonna, to me, it's gonna, it's gonna up the price of the property anyhow, won't it?
Should, could, maybe. I don't wanna dare say that zoning affects price at all. I mean, you can have a warehouse district that is run down that actually is a deficit. But, um, you know, in this particular case, I do feel like that zoning change could possibly increase what they see down the road, which he did explain to James and I that, um, they really aren't about the money or didn't seem like they needed the money right now as much as maybe in the future. So, uh, until Mr. Piazza comes in tomorrow and, um, and discusses it with us further and I, I think the comment that James told me today that, um, Mr. Piazza's comment was that he was willing to work with us, is what you told me today. So, I'm very hopeful that tomorrow's discussion will go as well as it did with the previous discussion with him. 'Cause like I said, I, I'm, you know, I absolutely am not a, a fan of condemnation at all and I don't want to utilize condemnation, but I had to be honest with Mr. Piazza to tell him that it is out there.
Which, it hasn't been done by this city before, but all the rest of them have.
Yes, I know.
And it's not, well, I don't like it either, but sometimes, like Tommy says, what it is, what it is.
Well, and I hope, uh, I hope that it doesn't go to that.
No, me too. Okay.
On to our next, discussion of amendment to chapter one fifty-five on our professional services fees.
Uh, counsel, uh, we were looking at, uh, some issues with, uh, chapter one fifty-five. Um, as you're aware of, uh, we've been through, uh, some planning changes or planners' changes in the city. Um, one of the things that, uh, we've done or I have done is, uh, basically made a deal with, uh, Garver, our engineering firm, uh, to assist us in some of the roles in our planning. Um, you know, not that I feel like our planning department is doing a bad job at all, but, um, I do feel like there are occasions that we need more sets of eyes looking at some of these projects than what we currently have. And not to say that our, our previous planners or even our current planner, um, has done a disservice to the city as, as much as I think that, you know, that we've got some things coming before us. Um, you know, specifically the, uh, waste management, um, project that's coming up, uh, that Ms. McNair spent a lot of time on, that I really feel the need, uh, to utilize her with our negotiations with them on that upcoming project. Uh, with doing so, that's an added cost to the city, um, that I don't feel like that the city should endure. Um, that if developers are wanting to bring very large projects into our town, um, that we need to take really hard looks at what the impact is to the city, not for tomorrow, but ten, twenty years from now. Um, so what we're asking to do is change, uh, one fifty-five. If you'll go to your packet, it is outlined, number one, professional review fees and cost. A, a non-refundable fee of five hundred dollars. Uh, in the event that professional review fees and costs exceed five hundred dollars, owners and or developers shall reimburse the city for all additional expenses incurred. Uh, we're not saying that this is gonna happen on every single project, but for the projects that we feel like we need the extra set of eyes, uh, for Garver's folks to, to come in and take a look at for us, um, those costs will be covered. Um, also in chapter one fifty-five, um, I don't know how many of these little boxes that you see all over town, but, um, with every project and every building that goes up in the city of Tontie Town, there's a permit box sitting out in front of it. Um, we've added nine-hundred-and-some water taps, which means there's been nine-hundred-and-some projects in this city. If you multiply that by ten, that's how much these little boxes cost us, the city. I know this sounds kinda petty, uh, but yet it's still another expense that the city is enduring, um, when these projects are going in. So, we're also asking to add to the permit fee, um, a ten-dollar box fee, if you will, to cover those costs as well. We're asking that you move this forward to city council meeting for approval.
I have a motion. I'll make a motion forward to the city council.
First, do I have a second?
Thought I heard a second down there somewhere.
A second?
We have a second somewhere.
I'll second it. I thought I heard it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gene?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you. And next is the discussion-
And next is the discussion of ordinance acknowledging the change of the municipal classification to the city.
Counsel, this is an ordinance prepared by the city attorney. We have received approval from the state to move us into city of the first class. So the council will have to pass this ordinance at your next scheduled council meeting, basically adopting the city of the first class.
I'll make a motion to pass it to city council meeting.
Thank you.
Second it.
Roll call.
Don?
Larry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Thank you. And last is
Second to last.
Second to last. Is our reminder for your statements, gentlemen. Councilmen, so if you would, please remember to turn these in. Last on our list was the addition for our streets and I'll turn this over to Tommy.
Bless you. I've got, I got four items down there to talk about on streets and it's just, it's just for discussion. Going into next year or this, this year, excuse me, and whatever else. Years ago, we had a tax rate that was fixed for the street department. It was fixed for oh, I think it was like 1.2% to 1.4% to the water department, 40% with the general fund, 20% were the street department years ago. And every month or as fees came in, that's how it was allocated. So a few years ago, we decided at the council to put all the money into the general fund and let, let the general fund pass it around. Well, neither here nor there, it's just that as I drive around the city of Tawny Town, our streets are pretty pitiful. And some of them need attention and we're just buying time on them. And I noticed that, you know, we put the money on this Fletcher Road extension or whatever else, but still, that didn't do our old roads any good at all. So my suggestion to you all is to think about it and look, and look at it, talk about it. And if we need to start allocating so much of our money like we did before into the street fund so we can finally, we can build up the bank. Of course, the way it's set up now, we're just going to come up with a project and we're going to switch the money out of general fund to a street project, but you know, it's, that's kind of what we did with the Fletcher Road extension. So, but there's other venues and just, just making you aware that there used to be always money going into the street fund and anymore, we don't have any money going in the street fund. So if we think we need to do it, you know, if y'all go out and drive around, you'll see what I'm talking about. And then between the street projects or dirt roads that need to be turned into pavement and just other fixes, we got a lot of money to spend on roads besides everything else in the growth of the city. That's just something to think about. Next item I want to talk about. We had some extra money and whatever else and we kind of, I was talking about it and pretty diligently and I kind of let it go by the wayside. And I was talking about our future street signs at Tawny Town, the styling them up and classifying them a little bit, make them look like we're, you know, a little proud. And we did one and we've not done anymore. So I'm just kind of interested in the council's thoughts and, you know, that we need to, are we just going to do one? Are we going to quit? Or are we going to do some more along the way? So I'd like for y'all's input to, towards the mayor or to whatever. Use some of our mad funds, let's do a few a year or something, whatever we need to do because they do look good. And one and done is not the way to go. So not for me anyway. So one sign is all we got done. This one right here on the corner, Cordially and this one right here, if you'll see it when we drive out. Looks good, but we need, we need the rest of them in the city to look good and proud of it. I'm tickled to death. Looks good, but one doesn't do it all. So anyway, I'd like for us to move in the direction of getting some more done when we get a chance. Mr. Clark, you listen to me down there? Okay, just making sure. Okay, let's see. For the Fletcher Road extension, the filler road, do you need a, you need a motion from us to forward that to city council? On that bid to do the filler road on that project? I was just asking, I don't know.
We'll have all that for you at the, at the council meeting.
I'll move right along. One more, that's my best one, so saved it for last. Potholes. I guess I've got a case of the, you know, what on it, so I'll just let you be known that I do. So it's just constructive criticism, what I'm going to say. Don't want anybody to get mad at me, but I think we've got a few employees out there that's labeled for the city of Tawny Town for a street department. And I think they go back and forth, street to water and water to street and whatever else they're needing. I visited with the mayor and I think he said he bought some asphalt patchwork. I think, correct? That's out there. If they need it, they can go get it. So I, there's some holes. I called Mr. Clark about them about a week ago. I drove around today and ain't been a damn one of them touched. So you know, I know we're so busy, we ain't got time to do it, I guess. So mayor made a suggestion about last meeting or two that, hey, wait a minute, we didn't get anything from the council. I told you all. Send me a note, tell me where the potholes are. Like hell. I don't think that's our job to go around the city and look for potholes. Any of these aldermen on here. You know, we've got city inspectors. We've got Mr. Clark, you drive around some. Roger Duncan drives around some. All the guys on the street department and water department, they not driving around the streets in today? You bet. Someone needs a little initiative to take the initiative to go get a damn bucket and fill a hole. I mean, it's not, it's not, I did it when I was mayor. Mr. Penzo, how many times will we do that? I mean, I did it just to help out. Do you need my help? If you do, I'll help you all do it. If you, you know, y'all give me a time, I'll come and help you if you need some help. But I don't think that's what I signed up for to do. We got people that could do it. I know we supposed to have someone that's going to fill some holes at a rate. Well, I don't, I don't have any faith in that. So we got the guy driving every day. I know they're not that dead gum busy that they can't do it. So do we need to appoint someone for a complaint department or someone we need to talk to? Counsel, if we know where potholes are, people, citizens call me, telling me where we got potholes are. Do we need someone? Do we need to funnel this to someone in particular? To see that it gets attended, at least looked at and get some of it fixed. I'm just talking about a hole. I thank you for patching the road in front of Mr. Penzo's house, Mr. Armani's house. That, I mean, it was a patch, that's good. It's a lot better than what it was. And I'm not asking to reasphalt the whole damn road. Let's fill some holes. I can drive around a little bit and I just, I just get disgusted. And so I'm going to ask the council, what do y'all think about it? I mean, do we need to appoint someone? Put someone in charge? I mean, there's people driving around all over town, police department. You guys, you're supposed to drive every street that there is in town. I know you do, Mr. Johnson, don't you? I mean, I know, and I'm sure we're not that big that we can't see that or make a notation and see that it needs to be done. You know, but who's going to do it? You know, I, I shouldn't say this, but
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, was I not live that whole time? But anyway, we're live now. Fuck it. You know, you should even, we should even, your name should even come up, talk about getting them because your employees should already have done it. I shouldn't even have to say anything about it. That's what I think. So anyway, I told you I was PO'd about it and now you know where I'm at again. So, but and I'm not talking about, you know, driving the roads diligently, but there are some holes that need to be filled, just little ones. I mean, the ones I see today, they're deep, but they're, they're bad. Two five gallon buckets will take care of one. And side of the road, I mean, I drove down Barrington. There's a side of the road there where you tell people been going off. It drops off a foot, right beside the road, on the corners down there, you know, but that might take two, three bucket full of asphalt for it, but it might take more than that, a bucket full of bike oil. But anyway, it needs to be, it needs to be addressed and I've said my piece. Thank you. I'm done. That's four. I have four items down there. You're clear to go.
Next, we'll go to our comments from the council members and we'll start down at this end. Larry?
I don't believe I have anything to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber?
I don't have anything.
Art?
Well, I'm not going to complain about the streets that I already did to James. I already told him one. But I know Tommy talked about this year ago. Getting the signs put up. And I know it's going to cost quite a bit of money, but I think it would it would make the town look like he said. You know, when you come into Tawny Town, you see the signs. Springdale, they plant thousands of trees to beautify their town down there. But I think the signs would would make the, the streets and Tawny Town look a little bit different, look a little bitter. So I'll quit right there.
Thanks, sir. Any more comments, Tommy?
Yeah, I got one more. This is pretty nice. Toodles, the police department, they had to do a call on me yesterday, so they handled me well. Thank you, sir. That's it.
Thanks, sir.
I'm not the bad boy you think I am. I don't think.
So speaking about the Westbrook subdivision, previously, we did discuss with them different ways to assist with their speeding issues in that subdivision. After the meeting, I called back and spoke to their POA president and had very good comments from him as far as our recommendations and what we can do to help with that. On Tawny Town side, I think as these subdivisions that go in, we probably should start looking a little bit more at our signage in the subdivisions. And maybe increase the number of signs that are, that are posted in there to alleviate that problem. I know it's hard to, to post all of these as the construction's going on, but we probably should see about adding a few more signage to prevent problems in those subdivisions as, as time goes on. Signs from Mr. Granada. I agree. I would say that if we have a small number of signs, whatever that number is, that we start doing every month, year, quarter, whatever, would start moving us forward. I don't think those were too expensive to do, but it is going to take some labor from our guys in order to install those. And if I remember correctly, we have to have those off, off of 412, off their easements. Is that not correct? Mr. Clark? Off there right away. Yeah. So we'll have a little bit of, a little bit of work to make those happen. I know on the, on the potholes, I drive these streets a lot. I know each of you drive the streets a lot. I have sent in, I want to say at least three or four emails with different areas that I've seen. I don't mind doing that. I know just on our street that I live on, one of our guys took the initiative, went and had it done. I even called, I think it was the mayor or James to ask them if our person from Fort Smith had started filling those yet. And I was surprised that that hadn't been the result of those getting filled. It was actually one of our employees that took the initiative. So our employees are taking some of the, some of the time that they do have, which I know they don't always have a lot, to do some repairs. My street, I know still isn't completed with all the things that I had on my list that I emailed in. I know Reed Valley still had some. Barrington still had some. But at least we made a little bit of progress on them. I think we probably need to start looking at having that contractor come in and, and do what they can in these areas and get that project moving. I know we talked about it for three months, four months, and it's probably getting close to time. We need to get him in here. That's all the comments I've got. Mr. Mayor?
Certainly. Counsel, there is issues going on within our city that I'm probably going to call upon you guys to offer some assistance with and also our planning board. We've been having discussions with our planners as recently as today. Currently, how the town is structured, a person can split their property up into five tracks and called a minor lot split. The problem with it is, or I feel like that we're going to see, and we've already seen some of it, is you do a minor lot split and you, you, you split it up into five tracks, then you wait a year and you can split five more. You wait another year and you can split five more. Now, that doesn't sound too bad. It sounds awful friendly and it is awful nice of us to do this, but what it, what it actually is doing is, is you guys, and I don't say you, but this body created ordinances and codes to develop subdivisions. And what essentially is going on right now is we're allowing people to create subdivisions without going through the subdivision steps, without looking at any of the grading that's going on, without looking at any of the streets that's going on. Matter of factly, as I recall, my butt got jumped in a council meeting by a couple of you guys about fixing a road that didn't belong to the city. How'd that happen? Well, several years ago, they were allowed to split these lots up. They put their own road in. And now, after a certain number of years, the road decayed and fell apart. It now suddenly is the city's responsibility to fix somebody else's road that wasn't built to standards. I think it's even pointed out to me that our emergency services can't get up that road. You need to do something about it, Mr. Mayor. Well, I really think that we need to take proactive steps and do something about what's happening right now under our noses because we're allowing this to happen. We're allowing people to build subdivisions without building subdivisions. We're allowing them to hook on to our water services and run lines up hills to 10 houses, 15 houses. Next thing you know, what happens? Oh, well, I got a water leak and you guys need to come fix it. We're seeing some of that go on in the city of Tawny Town. So I'm going to start asking for your guys' help and to, and to come to some of the planning board meetings because I'm going to press our planning board that we need to, to change some of our code and some of our rules to acknowledge this in our towns. If you talk to Mr. Jeff Hawkins, which I know many of you know, he'll even tell you, why are you, why do you even have subdivision regulations if you allow people to circumvent them? Which is what's going on. When I sit and listen to the complaints about flooding, have y'all heard anything about flooding in Tawny Town at all? I haven't heard you guys bitch about that one for a little while. Why do you think that occurs? What do you think one of the causes of it occurring is? Every time somebody builds a house, it pushes water somewhere else. So if we're allowing people to split up properties and we're not being allowed to have our engineers look at this, where is the water running? What direction are we sending it to? I, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to be hard on the public. I, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to be hard on the public or people to build in Tawnytown, but there's a lot of stuff that's kind of out of our control and we're, we're allowing it to be out of our control. So think about that one for just a little bit as we move forward. I think it was asked of me last time about buying a road grader. Why aren't you going to buy a road grader? You sold a road grader, we had two of them, she bought a road grader. And I think my comment to you was, is I was going to talk to the county about keeping our three dirt roads in Tawnytown, or four, if you want to call it that, graded. I did have conversations, I actually ate lunch with second in command at Washington County this last week. He said, not an issue, whenever our guy is in the area, by all means, we'll give you a call, you give us a call, they'll be more than happy to come grade it. We pay their guys hourly wage and maybe the fuel or whatever to come grade it. Now, if you would prefer that I buy a road grader and try to teach somebody how to operate it, I will, but it seems pretty cheap to me to allow the county to do what they do best, which is grading roads. But I'll do whatever you want me to do, I work for you. Signs in the city. Mr. Clark, what was our discussion about the new signs? As I recall, did we ever get a total approval of the signs?
No, actually, the last prototype we had still wasn't big enough.
Okay. So I'll be more than happy to start buying signs once you tell me what you want. So feel free to tell me how big, what color. We did put a sign up here, Cordiana. Is that what you want? That size? Or you want bigger?
Actually, a little bigger.
Okay, come in and tell me how big, if that won't upset your apple cart.
The only problem with that is any bigger sign is not going to work on that pole.
You'll have to buy bigger poles for it then.
Without extra bracing and, yeah, maybe a larger pole.
Okay. So once again, we'll be happy to do whatever you want us to do, tell us what you want us to do. Now, to address the alderman about my comments about asking for potholes and where they're at, I'm not asking for you to give me the addresses of potholes to make you get out and actually do your jobs. I'm asking for my own reference to make sure I know what potholes need to be done because the comments I made to the gentleman in Fort Smith about fixing the potholes or the agreement I made with him was I would not have him come up here to fill five or six potholes. I needed enough potholes for him to be up here for a full day. Now, that puts the councilmen's out by telling me how many potholes and where they're at, I'm sorry. That is a favor that I ask of you to tell me. And also, if I can have my employees do some of these potholes, I will, and also gives me a reference point to check. Now, I too can go out and drive around and I too can go out and look. Matter of fact, on occasion, Mr. Clark, when was the last time I called you about a pothole?
It's been several months.
No, I think it was last week, you got a pothole down here at the US Postal Service.
I agree with that one, yes.
Do you remember that now, Mr. Clark?
Oh, I thought that was one Tommy called about.
No, I called you about it.
Okay. Well, he called about one on South Barrington, which was Friday, by the way, I think.
Right.
And this is Tuesday and we didn't work yesterday.
Anyway, my point of this conversation is, I am absolutely not trying to put this body out by giving me descriptions of where potholes is at. And if the only problems that we have in this city are fixing potholes, damn, we must be doing something right. And we are absolutely trying to get as many of these items fixed as you guys want fixed. Matter of factly, I think the bitch and complaint that I heard was over off of Liberty about a pickup truck that fell to a hole to China that has been fixed. Maybe not repaired to what the alderman thinks it should look like, but I know for damn sure he was out there working on it because I specifically asked him to go work on it. And you're right, Mr. Granata, I as mayor don't have to be slapping my people around to get them to do things. They typically do things when I ask them to. And I'll be more than happy to ask them to fix whatever you want me to ask them to fix. Not that I have to, because they do it on their own recourse every time that I can think of. And I'll be more than willing to go out and drive around with you or anybody else to make my own list that you won't have to call me to tell me about a list. Fair enough? Thank you. Now I have one more thing. Since I'm on my rant. In two thousand fifteen, we came before this body and we were sitting with negative forty-nine thousand dollars in our checking account in general. I think the suggestion that I made to this body was to change the track, the tax structure, which was sixty, I believe, was it not? Excuse me, you're right, forty, forty, twenty. We changed it to where the general fund would have sixty in it and the water would continue to have forty. The reason why we did that is because you can't borrow for one. Now, I can give money out of my city general to my water or my streets at any time, but I can't go the reverse, was exactly why we changed that. If you guys want to change it back, live it up. It doesn't matter to me, but I needed money in our accounts that we could utilize to do some of the things that we have done in this city. I think a lot of people are very proud about what we've done. And yes, we put away a million dollars this last year that we can utilize. So if we're not spending money on streets, I don't know what the hell you call Fletcher is, that we're going to spend a million too on. We do have to take care of the streets that we have. We have applied every year the tap grants and everything else to fix our streets. Matter of fact, we did an overlay of two miles last year on one of our streets. Two years prior to that, we did another overlay for two miles with grant funding. I don't know, as I look back at previous city councils, I can't find anywhere where they did four miles in overlays, nowhere. So I guess we've done something right there. We're adding another street to add another commercial area to this town that will hopefully bring in more money too, that is a street. So, yeah, we're going to continue to work on streets. We're also going to make developers work on streets that they're tearing up. Matter of fact, I think Mr. Clark even said to you guys that out there on Liberty, that the developer is going to have to fix a portion of that. And we can keep putting money in the hole and spending money on and out of our pockets so we can have the developers do it. But my suggestion is that we make our developers that are come in, do off-site improvements as well to improve our streets. Now I'm done.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Yeah.
Gentlemen.